Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight, we have a very special evening of swearing in our newly elected council members, as well as welcoming back our current serving council members. And tonight, to kick off the ceremony proceedings, I am welcome Reverend Jim Poole up to give the invocation. Do we have a microphone?
Well, thank you very much for having me, Mayor Piana and council members. It's a real honor and privilege to be here tonight, and I'm humbled that you'd invite me on this special occasion for this day. I know that we each have our own convictions about spirituality and higher powers, which I feel aware of today, yet it seems good and fitting and helpful to pause at the beginning of such an occasion and give thanks and ask for help. So, since all of us need help from time to time. So, with that in mind, let's pray. Dear God, we ask that you would be with us this evening and throughout the year, and really be pause at the beginning to give thanks for not only this group of people, but that our democracy works and that it's come to bring us to a place where we have this opportunity to be together and voice our concerns and elect women and men who will give leadership in our city. We thank you for that work. We ask that you would give our leaders wisdom in the pursuit of justice. We ask that you would give them courage in making the inevitable, difficult decisions. We ask that you would give them kindness towards one another, towards themselves, towards residents and our neighbors, and all whom they work alongside. May these leaders remember that their office is a stewardship, and their role as leaders is as servants of the well-being of our city, our community, and our residents. May they carry out that stewardship faithfully and with fruitful effect. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Poole for those great messages. Next on the agenda is the swearing in of our 47th Ferndale City Council. Leading off tonight with the oath of office will be administered by Judge Joseph Longo of the 43rd District Court, starting with myself. I will come up here for go in the middle.
Thank you Judge B. Anderson.
It's my pleasure. It's the best part of the job.
I don't want to be in there.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Melanie Piana.
I, Melanie Piana.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mrs. Mayor.
Thank you. I next welcome Kent Bruner James to be sworn in.
I, Catherine Bruner James.
I, Catherine Bruner James.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And next, I welcome Laura McCulsky.
Now, you would think, having done this for 20 years, I would know this. And Judge Gettner does, but I still need a cheat sheet. Okay, I'll tell you the short story. I, Laura McCulsky.
I, Laura McCulsky.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the Charter of the City of Ferndale.
The Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And next up, I welcome Raylon Leaks May to be sworn in, and providing the oath of office will be administered by Judge Chuck Gettner from the 43rd District Court.
Now that Judge Longo said that, I'm probably going to flunk. I'm going to pretend to read. Please raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. I, Raylon Leaks May.
I, Raylon Leaks May.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter of the City of Ferndale.
The Charter of the City of Ferndale.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
In and for the City of Ferndale.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And state of Michigan.
And state of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I also want to give recognition to Greg Polica, who's sort of been the anchor of this council. As you all know, we've had significant transition in leadership over the last year, and so thank you for your steady leadership, and I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad to be here with all of you. I also just wanted to say thank you to the community members who came out tonight to witness the ceremony, but also to our families who are here as well. You know, part of being on council is your family is your backbone of support. They make sure you eat healthy food and just be supportive along the way. So I just wanted to say thank you. And because I'm mayor, I'm just going to say thank you to my grandma, who's 98 years old, who came here tonight. It means the world to me that you're here. Would you like to do that? It has been requested to get some photographs with some families before we start, so we will have, why don't we start with you first? And where are we getting some photos, up here?
Right here.
They would come right here with council? You would like to have them with council?
With council and then with the family.
Okay, all right. And is Kara taking photos?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So, the Raylon Leaks May family, come on up. You want, you can come behind the dais here, and we'll get a photo. Would anybody else like to have their family come up at this time?
No.
No? You're okay?
Nope, mine are at home.
Yours are at home, all right. Mom, Dad, are you guys okay? Would you like to come up?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Come on up, Mom, Dad, Molly, Kayla. We got one with Grandma below. Grandma's in a wheelchair, so is going to have trouble coming up. Come on up behind me. Behind us. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to have our families come up and be part of this occasion this evening. With that in mind, I, Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call of the 47th Ferndale City Council?
My pleasure. Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Leaks May.
Here.
Councilmember McCulsky.
Here.
Councilmember Polica.
Here.
And Mayor Piana.
Here. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Any changes? Excellent, so roll call, please, Clerk.
Councilmember Leaks May.
Yes.
Councilmember McCulsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Polica.
Yes.
Councilmember James.
Yes.
And Mayor Piana.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is a series of presentations, and we're going to start with the introduction of new police officers by our Chief of Police, Palazzolo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How was everybody?
Good. Good evening.
I've got the honor and the privilege of introducing three new employees tonight. They all come from a wide variety of background and experience, and I'd like to introduce some now. First one, if you come on up, is Julia Cook. She is filling one of our two vacant dispatcher positions. She grew up in Ferndale, she's got long Ferndale ties, she's got a bachelor's degree from Western Michigan University. She's a veteran, she spent six years in the Michigan Army National Guard. And what is interesting about her is her father, not only is a police officer, but he was a dispatcher here in 2000. So, everybody, Julia Cook. The next police officer I'm introducing is Officer Sutter. He also has law and ties to the community. Both his parents grew up in the area. He's got an associate's degree from Macomb. He played, he's got an athletic background, so he understands the meaning of team. He made a run as a semi-pro in hockey. But what I find most admirable about him is he didn't have the money to put himself through the police academy and not work. So he joined the academy part-time, which was a 10-month academy while he was still working full-time. So he was doing both, and the police academy is a pretty arduous event. So I give him a lot of credit for doing that. Welcome Officer Sutter. You can smile, it's okay. Our third and last is Officer Andre Bandu. Mr. Bandu was born in Jamaica. He's currently a Ferndale resident, and to say he is an overachiever is an understatement. He is a United States Marine Corps veteran, he's got multiple combat deployments. He's comes highly spoken of from his classmates in the academy, along with the director. He's got two master's degrees, two bachelor's degrees, an associate's degree, and why not be have a pilot's license as well? The reality is, Mr. Bandu could have gone anywhere he wanted to go, and we have been trying to get him on the force for a while. We liked, outside of all that, is that he was a Ferndale resident and he was extremely interested to come here and work with us. So, please welcome him to the team. That's it, thank you.
Can we have a helicopter now?
We'll put that in the capital improvement plan. Thank you very much, and thank you for choosing Ferndale to be a place where you want to work. I'm going to, aside, I just noticed, or someone brought to my attention, that County Executive Dave Coulter was here, and Senator Jeremy Moss, and I think, did I see Helene Zach in the audience too? No? Okay. But I wanted to say, if you wanted to say a few words at this point in time, this would be appropriate time to do it. Are you just here to witness all the fun? Okay. Well, you did this as mayor with all of our elected, so I only assume that it would be fair to extend the offer.
Well, I did, and I appreciate that, and I really did just come to witness this. I respect all of you so much, and there's still a little part of me that it's hard to believe I'm not here, but I know that the city's in great hands, and congratulations to the new people. You're kind of new, but you're brand-new, and I wish you much success in overseeing our city. Mayor, I wish you all the success in the world. I know that you'll be a phenomenal mayor, as you were as a councilwoman. So, and Raylon, of course, so happy to see you back for another term, and Greg, of course, always great to see you, all of you. I just wanted to come and see it for myself and make sure that you got off to a great start. So congratulations to all of you, and thanks for recognizing.
Thank you for being here. Senator Moss.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to wish the same. I served on a city council in the neighboring community for a term. I loved every minute of it. I feel that, you know, now serving in the state legislature, local government still is the closest to the people that you serve. I mean, you literally conduct the business in front of the people that you serve, whereas we're a little isolated in Lansing. But I'm here as a resource, I'm here as a partner, I'm excited to work with all of you. I serve on the Senate Local Government Committee, having had that experience at the local level. So, this is not just you asking me for help, I'm going to ask you for help as well in conducting state business and making sure that Ferndale is served to the best of my ability with great partners here on the local level. So I wanted to congratulate the new mayor, the newly-elected and re-elected council members, and I'm looking forward to working with you in the term ahead. Thanks.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support. All right, next on the agenda is the 2019 Holiday Lights Awards, presented by the Beautification Advisory Commission. Hi, Robin, great to see you.
Hello, Ms. Mayor. How are you? I guess I clicked the wrong one, one second. I usually have my sidekick Suzanne with me tonight, but unfortunately, she couldn't make it. It's not coming up on the screen.
One moment, while we, are you waiting for the PowerPoint? Okay.
So first of all, I would like to say, Happy New Year and 2020 to you all. I am very excited to be working with the new council this year, and on an aside, if there is anyone in the Ferndale area citizen that would like to become a member of our Beautification Commission, we unfortunately are losing one of our voting members, but gaining a very awesome liaison on the city council through Laura McCulsky. We hate to see her leave that little bit of portion there, but we are excited about her being where she is now, and so if there's anyone interested, there's always application forms for you to fill out to be possibly a member of the Beautification Commission. So, we're finishing up 2019 to get a few things out of the way, and as I said, we wish you a happy 2020. The first house that was recognized with an award is in the southeast quadrant of Ferndale. It's 676 Wordsworth. This particular house, for those of you who may have taken opportunity to go by and check it out, was quite electric in its presentation, and Howard and Tara Crawford are the owners of the home. It was very impressive, it was synchronized to a local radio station, and fortunately for their neighbors, they shut it off at nine every night, so they didn't have to deal with it 24/7. But congratulations to Howard and Tara Crawford on their win in that quadrant. In the northeast quadrant, the winner was 2240 Hamada. This house is one that is owned by Robert Perenello and Eric Shock. It is what we classically call a lovely, traditional decor with garlands and swags, bows and lights. It wasn't only pretty at night, but it was also pretty during the day. So, congratulations to- So, congratulations to Robert and Eric for doing a beautiful job on their home. The next home is in the northwest quadrant, belonging to John and Shelley Mender. This house definitely had a gingerbread feel going with the multicolored lights that outlined it. It was also flanked and probably had a little pressure put on it by the two houses on either side, which are former winners of the same award. So, the folks at 641 West Breckenridge, awesome job, and thank you. The southwest winner was at 407 St. Louis, and the owners of this house are Christian and Laura Rice. We were very, very happy to see something very cute and whimsical. It was the total opposite of the first house we saw, which is very techno and electric. Santa leaving in a hot air balloon and Frosty waving farewell was just perfect for those of you who are still kids at heart. And so, congratulations to Christian and Laura. Yes, it is. Right over there. Yeah, it very much is. Trust me. The next award that we're acknowledging is for the business winner. You noticed on the first slide that we saw, it was the unicorn, which we all thought someone was going to nominate, but no one did. And so, actually, the folks at Detroit Axle over here on Facing Eight Mile have done an amazing job, and we wanted to recognize them, not just for the lights, but also for what they've done with that property. And it looks really, really terrific there on Eight Mile. So, congratulations to the folks at Detroit Axle. Finally, we wanted to give a major shout-out to DPW for a wonderful job this holiday season. The town was just beautiful. Thank you, thank you for all that you did to light up our world here in Ferndale. And as always, we also want to recognize the fact that not only were they involved in lighting up people's lives, but it seems that the police force and the fire folk also lit up some people's lives in the Moonbeams for Sweet Dreams activity that took place. And, you know, the fact that this is done and all that we have in our community that are active and positive and uplifting, it just makes us, as residents and commission members, so much more thrilled for doing what we do. And I can't say how much we appreciate all the support that the city residents has given us. Follow us on Facebook. Stay in tune with us. You never know what other award we might come up with, and I know that 2020 is going to be an even better year for us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robin. And thank you to the Beautification Advisory Commission. Next on the agenda is the Ferndale Community Concert Band presentation by Tim Brennan and Sharon Chess.
Tim and I are co-founders of the Ferndale Community Concert Band, and we're here to enlighten the community if they don't already know about us, and to ask something of the new council to approve. That's us playing on mute.
You sound wonderful.
Kara, how do you get sound?
Thank you.
But as you can see, it's an adult band. And we're 85 members strong. We're 75 to 85 members strong, depending on what time of season we are, and we're celebrating our very fifth year. And if you'd like to go to our YouTube page and actually hear us at home, please do. Or another way is to certainly attend our concerts. They're always free, just like listening to this promo video was free.
Okay, that's perfectly fine.
For those of you who've had the opportunity to come and listen to us, you know we're a very quality band, and we're very pleased to be here for the city of Ferndale. I'm going to start off by reading our mission statement. The Ferndale Community Concert Band is a diverse, inclusive, multi-generational musical ensemble of experienced volunteer musicians from all over Metro Detroit. Its mission is twofold, to provide quality, challenging musical mentoring experiences for members and student musicians, as well as educating and entertaining the cities, the citizens of Ferndale, and the surrounding communities. Tim and I are going to share this presentation.
Okay. As Sharon mentioned, we're here to make a request of the new council, and we're asking that the city officially recognize the Ferndale Community Concert Band as a value and a distinctive asset to the city and extension, as an extension of the Arts and Cultural Commission. And through that, we would, we're asking that you include us and our schedule in your print work for the city, announce our concerts, hang our sign, and post our concerts on the public network. I'd like to give you a little brief overview of the Ferndale Community Concert Band. As I stated earlier, we got it, we got our start through the Ferndale Arts and Cultural In 2013, I was invited to join the Arts and Cultural Commission by my sister, Joanne Wilcock. At one of the earliest meetings I attended, I made mention of the fact that Ferndale did not have a community musical ensemble. There were a number of communities in southeast Michigan area with musical groups such as Rochester, Warren, Farmington, and Royal Oak has two, actually, Clarkston, North Oakland County, and Macomb County. The commission then assigned Sharon and me to do research into which kind of ensemble the community preferred. Do they want a concert band or a symphony orchestra? So, we did a survey, and we did it through social media, and we also did it in-person at Pride in 2014. And the results turned out that the city preferred to have a concert band. Through social media and other methods, we put out an invitation to the local area, and we were able to attract about 65 to 70 musicians. And at that point, I approached Roger Smith, a longtime friend of mine and who was then principal of Ferndale High School, and we were able to secure a rehearsal space in the middle school band room with a performance venue in the auditorium, wherever we have been housed for the last four to five years. And that's basically the history of what we've done.
We became a nonprofit and applied for nonprofit status in 2015, when we kind of separated from the Arts and Cultural Commission and became an entity of ourselves. And by doing that, it allowed us to apply for grants, accept donations, and other financial support from other donors, even within our membership, who only pays $25 annual dues to be a member. And it also afforded us the opportunity to be in control of our own finances, making decisions that affected us specifically and no other entities. And, okay.
Currently, the band boasts of 75 members, approximately. We are an all-volunteer organization. Our members volunteer their time and talents to make this band an exceptional musical ensemble. The concert band rehearses once a week for two hours. We go from September through approximately the middle of June each year. We have a few other smaller ensembles, which we feature from time to time in different settings, a jazz combo, a small woodwind ensemble, and most recently, an 18-piece dance band, which we hope to feature in upcoming concerts. During the four-and-a-half years we've been in existence, we have had over 250 musicians rotate in and/or out of our band. Our musical director is Mr. Ed Quick, former Detroit public school teacher at the Detroit School of Arts. We've had several well-known musicians perform with us over the years. Joe Broom, who is a bassist artist, Wendell Harrison, a world-renowned touring jazz musician, Dennis Nolte, who is a Detroit Symphony Orchestra tubist. We are funded mainly with donations from our patrons in attendance at our concerts. And as Sharon mentioned earlier, our concerts are free of charge. However, we do accept donations gladly, and Sharon will speak more about funding.
Give, give, give. So, with the city recognizing us as an extension of community, this allows us to plan and apply for additional grant dollars. In some instances, they want a letter from the city that shows that we are a part of the city, not just that you support us and attend and recognize us, but that we're actually, say, a part of the Arts and Cultural Commission that is supported on every level within the city. What that also allows the city to do, and Royal Oak does this, is you can apply for grants. The Bloomberg Philanthropic Organization, just for example, you can apply to an organization such as that that will give you the dollars that you need to, say, hire and pay somebody to do either grant writing for us, graphic designing for what we need, anything that you find that would help to continue and grow the arts and culture here in our community. And it has, over the years, I've listened to all the different DDA, Chamber of Commerce, the high school, the Arts and Cultural Commission, of the type of art we want down here, but it doesn't, it seems to continually run into roadblocks because there's no big department within the city that watches over this and that can continually staff it, because the volunteers come and go. It takes a lot of time to do this. So, if you had a staff of, say, one or two people that was supported by philanthropic dollars, and it really didn't come out of the city, I think this would be a great attribute to add to the growth of city recognition. Not only do we recognize pride and arts and culture, but the city just grows a little bit more in really accepting and promoting arts and culture in this city. So, please consider doing that. Within our band of members of 75 to 85, they come from 22 different cities. We have members, and our audience members, come from four different counties. So, that means we're bringing a lot of business here to downtown Ferndale, because a lot of our members, either before rehearsal or after rehearsal, gather at the different venues here. New Way Bar usually has on Tuesday nights, you know, you show up and they have open mic, and some of our members will go there and play. But it's just an opportunity for our downtown businesses to also benefit by our members and our attendees.
A little more about the band. Over the years, as I stated, we have, our inception was 2015, was our first year. In 2016, in March, we performed by invitation at the Motor City Brass Band Festival at the Dearborn Performing Arts. In 2017, we performed at the Red Cedars Band Festival in Ochumus. In 2018, we performed at the Clarkston Band Festival. And this past year, in May, we were invited to perform at the NAACP Convention, a fundraising event, at Kobo Arena. I'd like to say a little bit about the piece we performed there. It's entitled "Of Our New Day Begun." And for those of you that know what that song is, it means a lot, and we performed an original composition by Omar Thomas, and we're going to be performing it again at the Carr Center this March, March 7. We've also been involved in the MoBig events that have been taking place on Belle Isle. Recently, they started an initiative to rebuild and revamp the band shell from the Leonard B. Smith era, and they've been trying to get bands to come out and play, and we were the first band that performed in the MoBig Festival on Belle Isle in 2018. So, and we have quite a few feathers that we have added to our hat over the past few years, and Sharon's going to show you a little bit about the website from the Royal Oak community.
Actually, there was a link to the Royal Oak community. What Royal Oak does is they have a page, an arts and culture page on their website that you can go to, and it lists all of the different venues, concert times, and performances for the Royal Oak Symphony. And that's kind of the format that we're looking, the city here, to do on our behalf. And at any time, Tim or I, or both of us, would be happy to sit down with any member on council or mayor to just kind of go over details and particulars and guide you through the process of supporting us. But by doing this, by choosing to do this, it helps us out a lot, and it will help you to grow also as a recognizable community in arts and culture, because even though Royal Oak's got theirs going on, has for a long time, we're better. Thank you very much.
You almost heard that.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate what we do, and I totally understand the growing pains of a startup nonprofit, having been in those myself. We will take a look at your requests through the city manager's office. Hang on. Next up on the agenda is the presentation of contribution to the Ferndale Community Foundation. And I think, who is introducing that? Welcome. Thank you for being here.
You bet. My name's Jim Clark. I'm with Robertson Homes. I will be brief. Back in 2016, we put a contract together to buy two of the school properties that were closing from the Ferndale School District, worked cooperatively with many members of this board and some that are in the audience at this time, to get two different projects approved, a 28-unit single-family subdivision called Wilson Park, and a 72-unit project called Parkdale, both of which have, well, both of which opened in 2018, one in April and one in July. When the approvals were done, we made an offer to the commission that basically said, when the houses are sold and done and delivered, we would like to make a contribution of $200 per home for each home that we sell here. My only frustration now is I have a check for the community foundation for $10,000 is we didn't get more density. But I said that the whole time back in '16 and '17. So, we are delighted to give back to the community. It sounds like you have a number of very worthy causes, and I don't know if anyone is here from the community foundation. Wonderful.
Excellent. Why don't you come up here and do the presentation of the check? Thank you, Mr. Clark, and thank you to the Ferndale Community Foundation. We look forward to hearing how that money's going to be allocated.
When it's all said and done, there will be $20,000. So this is 10, and I think we gave something last year, so we just have to finish the rest of the houses. So, once again, we're delighted to be in Ferndale, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
You can talk to one of the representatives who are in the audience. So, next on the agenda is the 2019 Annual Sustainability Report presentation, and joining us is our sustainability planner, Erin.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you for having me and letting me give you this presentation this evening. My name is Erin Quatell. I'm the Environmental Sustainability Planner for the city of Ferndale. I started this annual sustainability report after the first year of being here. It's an overview of some of the successes we've had as far as sustainability goes for our community, and certainly, you know, there's other things that probably have occurred, but these are kind of like the big highlights and wanted to present that to you this evening. So, I will talk about the year in review. I always like to bucket things in kind of categories and give you an overview of what has happened in each of those. So I'm going to touch on energy, waste, water, the urban tree canopy, and talk at some of the awards. And one of the things that I did that's new to this presentation this year is kind of looking at what's next. I think that that's something that was a little bit missing in a previous presentation I've given or other discussions that I've had of where my brain is at, you know, how it aligns with the strategic plan that city council set forth, as well as the master land use plan. So as far as energy goes, we have had a lot of really great successes, one of which is the first city-installed solar carport outside of City Hall for the police. And that project is very cool because it's very visible. You can see it. It's outside of City Hall, and we're hoping that this will be the launch of many more solar projects throughout the community. The second thing on there is the full LED streetlight conversion. So over 1,700 streetlights throughout the city of Ferndale have been converted to LEDs, and that'll have not only significant savings for us, but also better lighting quality and better service overall for our right-of-ways. We, as a community and city council, previous city council, approved the revolving energy fund. And for those that are not familiar with that, is what it is, is it's a financial mechanism to reinvest efficiencies that are gained from energy projects. So the very first one, being the LED streetlight conversion, that'll have a significant amount of savings of return on investment of just over two years, and that's going to be the first project to kind of go through this process of the revolving energy fund. And what that does is then, some of that fund for the efficiencies will then cover what we spent through the general fund and then be reinvested in future efficiency projects throughout the community. The next thing on there is EV infrastructure. As part of the access management ordinance updates, EV infrastructure is now required for all new development, and that includes single and multifamily developments. So it's pretty exciting. In addition to that, we have an approved CIP request last year to include four new EV charging stations for the next three years, so a total of 12 new stations throughout our community, which is pretty exciting. Lastly on there is, we have, it's kind of a cool transition story for one of our interns that we had here at the city of Ferndale, Alexis Richards. So she started as an intern and now is a part-time person with us, working on, specifically with Energy Management Portfolio, which is a, through Energy Star, which helps, you know, anybody really, but it's really helpful for municipalities and government to track their energy use throughout their municipal buildings. And so she's done a really phenomenal job, and I could probably give you a whole entire presentation on that, but I'm going to wait probably later in the year to give that to you guys. But kind of stay tuned for some of the recommendations that come through that. And as far as energy, what next? We're looking at really ramping up the revolving energy fund projects for municipal facilities specifically, and so reusing the efficiencies that we've had through that for future investments, continuing to benchmark multiple facilities, but something more than just energy, energy management portfolio can look at water use and can also look at waste. And so that'll be kind of the next step after energy. And then finally, looking at renewable energy and our carbon reduction targets for the community. That's something that has been on my mind since I started here at the city of Ferndale, and now I think is a really good time to start integrating. So the next thing I'll touch on is waste. The first thing is that we have seven big-belly smart receptacles that are in our downtown parking system and in our central business district area. And what you can see on this slide is the recycling amount, the landfill amount, and then the diversion rate. So that's just the difference between the two, how much has been diverted from the landfill through recycling. I'm going to take a pause and catch my breath. The next two items are similar in that we put out two different RFPs to get some assistance with our waste management in the city. The first one that you see is for downtown specifically. You know, there's a lot of stuff going in downtown, and this was partly brought up because of the DOT development. You know, previously, there was a lot of waste management that happened in that surface lot, and because of the new development, waste management is just completely changing for that particular part of the city. And we thought, you know, we need to improve the level of service for our downtown anyways. How can we do that? So we have a consultant RRS onboard that's been helping us since November, and they're planning to probably likely finish up by mid-February and give a presentation to council by the beginning of March. So kind of look for that. But things about that project include a waste characterization, regional facilities analysis, emerging technologies in waste management, projected waste stream, a gap analysis, and then a final master plan. So that'll be the result of that particular project. And then, the third bullet on there is a special waste, special events waste management. And so, you know, every time we have new special events, we're trying to make efficiencies and improvements, and one of the things that we're looking for is assistance with improving our waste management for our events. They bring in a lot of people, they generate a lot of waste, we need to manage it better, and we need a little bit of assistance with that. We've tried a few things here and there, but we're hoping that we can get a consultant that can really help revamp a lot of that for us. And then, kind of three things to look at the what's next is, you know, clearly integrate those findings that we have from, you know, hopefully from these consultants that we have with the downtown waste report, as well as the special events. Continue to investigate anaerobic digestion. That's something that didn't necessarily have a whole lot of progress in 2019, but is still on our mind of figuring out how we manage our organic waste. That's something that we don't really do very well in the city of Ferndale, aside from, you know, what soccer provides is picking up your lawn clippings and things like that. We have a lot of restaurants, we have a lot of food producers, so figuring out how to manage that organic waste, which is the third thing on there, really looking at organic waste management. Onto water. Two cool projects that Ferndale has been involved with this year was the George W. Coon, which always trips me up because I just refer to her as GWK. We're a part of the GWK community in Drayna's district. And we had the privilege to working alongside some consultants and the Oakland County Water Commissioner's Office and Commissioner to look at our stormwater standards for our community, look at how, like, how easily our ordinance supports integrating those, maybe updated green infrastructure standards, stormwater standards. And so a report on that is upcoming, but that was a really great way to kind of look and see how we can improve, move forward with that. And then the second one regarding water is also focused on our stormwater system, but really looking at our stormwater system and its adaptability to climate change and how resilient it is or how maybe not resilient it is. What is the risk that we have for our current system? And so we conducted a full vulnerability assessment of, I believe it was, seven different categories that we collectively internally kind of deemed appropriate to look at for our system, such as condition, loads, you know, what's the impervious area of our community, how much green infrastructure we have, and so on and so forth. And so, regarding the what's next, kind of coming out of those two things combined, is really looking at better green infrastructure and updating our stormwater ordinances to be more appropriate for new development and redevelopment and that sort of thing. As a little note, the Oakland County Water Commissioner has been working with the surrounding counties to look at how stormwater standards and stormwater ordinances can be more cohesive because right now it's kind of all over the board, and that makes it very difficult to enforce, as well as encourage developers to kind of be more innovative and figure out how we can better manage our water system. And what's really cool is that we'll have our first right-of-way green infrastructure installation along West Marshall this next year. So we have three new bioretention cells that are going in. The next thing is our urban tree canopy. I wanted to highlight just how much work and how amazing it was that we were able to plant over 400 trees last year as a community. That's between our volunteers, that's a whole lot of work and amazing work by our DPW staff, so thank you. I can't thank them enough, honestly. And through the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program. We also renewed our Davy Reese's Group contracts, and I know that was part of, we had a lot of different discussions about that, so we had a contract extension that'll be up at the end of this fiscal year. And, but what we're really, really focused on this particular extension was training for our DPW staff. And that training include, actually, one of them just happened last week. And the next two trainings, one is occurring the week after Arbor Day, and that's going to be tree ID and tree planting. And then another one in June, which is going to be tree inspection and tree risk. Also part of that, I'm kind of going into like the what's next for the training right there, you'll see that there's aerial training, so that's a little bit more technical. We're going to be utilizing an external consultant to help our DPW staff with that. And that was all made possible because we received an MDNR grant to help offset that training for us, so that's really great. And then, actually, later this evening, we'll be talking about some of the reprogramming that we hope to have passed this evening for the CDBG 2020 tree planting, but that's another look ahead for our urban canopy. And since the urban canopy is so cool, the next slide is also about that, and you'll see some metrics and a map of all the public trees planted in the city of Ferndale. And so that's everything along the right-of-way, as well as in our parks. There's a link at the bottom too, that we have this program which makes these beautiful maps, and you can actually zoom in to your particular place where you live, or if you're interested in what tree that is in a particular park, you can look at the different specs for that, and it's used, we use a program called Treekeeper. And finally, I would like to talk about some of the awards. So I wanted to break down, since I've been on staff, the Michigan Green Communities Challenge. Specific to Michigan, it's any municipality can participate in it. So when I first got on, we had a bronze, and we were able to level up to a silver in 2018. We stayed consistent, so this year we have a two, we have a silver as well, and I actually have the award that I wanted to officially present to council this evening, so.
Thank you.
That's great. Also, one of the things to note that I mentioned earlier was that we received a grant through the Urban Forestry Program through the MDNR, $3,700 to offset the training for our DPW staff. So hopefully, we'll level up again in 2020. That's my goal, to go gold. And then the other thing is that we are still on track to achieve the Parksmart certification for the DOT. So with that, that was kind of a lot. These last three, last four bullet points are just some other things about, that have been on my minds, that have, community members have talked about, certainly some, you know, previous and current council members have talked about, but really looking at climate and how that is impacting our community. One of the things that I have proposed is to integrate that climate action planning into our master land use planning, similar to how sustainability was integrated into our master land use planning, as a platform to help really integrate climate and thinking about climate in everything that we do for our community and our, and our city. Similarly with, we are up for our Ferndale Moves update, and Justin Lyons, our planning manager, has done a fantastic job with that, and this is just an opportunity, again, to integrate more sustainability opportunities in that. And then the last two are participation in national and international organizations. We are part of the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, and that is a fantastic organization. I can't tout it enough. I'm really pleased that we continue to participate in that. In total, we have seven communities in Michigan that are part of it now, and that includes us at the city, the city of Dearborn, city of Detroit, Holland, Grand Rapids, Royal Oak, and, did I miss anybody? I don't know if I had to write them down because I knew I would forget. No, I think that's it. Oh, and Ann Arbor, obviously. That's clearly who's involved. And then, the last thing I want to say is that I'm hoping that we can join the, join ICLE. It's known as ICLE, nobody ever says this long big title, but it's the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, and essentially, it's an organization that focuses on climate and sustainability for communities. So, I think that's all I have. I welcome your questions, or if you have any comments.
Thank you so much for the comprehensive presentation. Very excited about all these initiatives advancing that came forth through the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission and where incorporated our master plan. But I'm also looking to, what I've been calling, advance and accelerate our work on addressing the effects of climate change. And so, I know you and I are already working on some of that, and I know other council members here, it's a priority for them as well. So I look forward to working with you closely on a lot of these initiatives going forward.
Great. Same, likewise.
Does anybody have any questions or comments at this time?
Very thorough presentation.
I tried. It was a lot, and I felt kind of bad. I was trying to kind of rush through it, I knew there's like a lot going on, but thank you. I did want to give this to you guys, so I don't know if you want to accept it now, if you want to wait till later.
No, we can accept it now. Do you want to bring it on up?
Oh, here, I'll come over. I get a picture with Erin.
Hey, stay there.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for the presentations. Next on the agenda is the call to audience, and we allow 30 minutes approximately or so for everybody to come up and say what they have to say. We, please ask you to limit it to three minutes so that everybody who is interested in speaking has a chance to speak. And you can come up to the podium. Are there any takers tonight? Welcome.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches, good evening. Ferndale, city council, and mayor. My name is Augusto Mike Flores on Wellington Street. First, Feliz Ano Nuevo. I hope all of you had a joyous holiday season and a happy new year with your family and loved ones. Second, Felicidades to the newly elected and re-elected council members. It's great to see familiar faces on council, but more importantly, it's great to see new faces on council. This is a new makeup that will allow for stable continuity with the opportunity to question the status quo and introduce new ideas. Third, the reality is that this is a pivotal year for our community. Hard questions pertaining to what makes us uniquely Ferndale will be asked, challenged, confirmed, or redefined by this council. I'm looking forward to supporting council as you answer these hard questions on the community's behalf. I look forward to how council balances the community's interest of inclusive decision-making, community engagement, quality city services with responsible financial oversight, and being a resident first. It will not be easy, but the community will be here to support you and to hold each other accountable. Once again, thanks to all of you for your service to our community. I'm looking forward to working with every single person on council to make our community one of the best communities in Metro Detroit. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Congratulations on the recent election, for those of you that were recently elected. Um, I did vote and I've never voted in Ferndale, I've never voted in Ferndale City Council or any mayor election or city council election. Um, there's some illegal activity that's been occurring in my life for a long time and I, I haven't gone about it the best way possible. I probably was going too high up for a long time. You know, with the advent of the internet, you know, you can now, you know, send an email to the President of the United States. You know, somebody reads it, but it probably doesn't get filtered through and there's really not much process behind complaint that's emailed off to the President, President of the United States. Um, anyway, I've emailed President Obama, President Donald Trump about uh, being filmed without consent. More recently, um, there's about four or five pages of illegal activity that I uh, filled out and gave to the Ferndale Police Department. That was probably, excuse me, that was probably three, four weeks ago. Anyway, um, I left a letter uh, for Chief Palazzolo uh, because I did not hear back with who's following up on that illegal activity to find out, you know, where the evidence is and how to prosecute and so forth. So anyway, it severely impacts my life. I want to realize my potential, there's a lot of nonprofit interests that I have, there's political interests that I have. I feel in sync with Ferndale in, you know, a lot of ways, you know, being environmentally friendly, progressive. Um, anyway, it's just, I feel sad in some ways because I haven't realized my potential and I've made a lot of mistakes, but I also rely on you guys for help to make, you know, better decisions and to help me move forward with help that I need. So anyway, I guess Brendan, Detective Brendan Moore may have been addressing that illegal activity. That's who Chief Palazzolo mentioned um, uh, to work with, that was probably seven, eight months ago now with some illegal harassment outside my home, but um, anyways, is there somebody that I could talk to specifically, a city council member or, yes, sir?
Through, through the chair, I would encourage you to leave your contact information on the city manager, Joseph Gacio, and I coordinate with the department, I'm happy to follow up on your request with your information.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Let me just type that in, second.
And you could leave that, uh, your contact information with the city clerk.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
So Joseph.
It's a doozy, Gacio, it's G-A-C-I-O-C-H.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Great to be part of, part of the political process.
Thank you very much for coming.
I didn't get sleep last, I apologize for being a little bit off, I didn't sleep all last night.
You did great, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. It's good to see you tonight. It's not good to see you wearing a arm brace.
No.
I'm sorry to see that.
Mother Nature kind of won that battle with this ice we uh, just had this past weekend. But anyways, I had a situation here a couple of months ago and it was a sad one and I just wanted to take the time to thank the Ferndale Police Department for their quick response to which uh, I found my brother dead on the floor. And uh, I called Ferndale, I called Ferndale first without thinking I could have just dialed 911, but they were there with what seemed like an hour, which was only less than two minutes. But uh, they did a very quick response and uh, in the process of a cleanup, Carlos and crew done one heck of a job of coming out and responding and cleaning up what we left out on the curb, our family and that. And I just wanted to thank those guys for the fast job and the, and the efficient job that they both done, both departments did there. Thank you.
Thank you, and um, I'm sorry to hear about your, your loss.
Yep.
My condolences to you and your family. Anybody else for a call to audience tonight? Mr. Whitey.
Yes, good evening. Different perspective back down here, kind of comfortable actually. Dennis Whitey, 1510 Camden. Uh, the first thing I want to extend is congratulations to all of you uh, who have won reelection, election and new elections, um, and that I'm very confident where the city is moving forward. Something that come up, a question that actually Councilman McColsky asked me is, what, what did you want to accomplish that you just didn't have the time to get to? And we had that discussion uh, last week, uh, but two of the things um, that stand out are, number one, the train issue, um, I did post on Facebook, uh, the federal government now is starting to keep uh, data on that, so hopefully we can get some federal relief. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, some type of warning system such as what Woodhaven is using, they have a camera system, you just pull up on the app, so you can see when you leave the house, is there a train near, coming, what's going on? Uh, the second thing is for community outreach, I think what would be an excellent idea is, uh, most people um, don't read legal notices in print form and I think that uh, this would be a good opportunity for the city to uh, print their legal notices that are legally required in the Oakland County Times. Uh, a lot of people uh, look at Crystal's paper, uh, she does a fantastic job, she's our, technically our only local investigative journalist uh, around and I think posting those legal notices within there, and I don't think it would be that much of a budget hindrance on the city, so I would ask you to look at that. And then lastly, of course, very much congratulations to our new mayor, this is excellent, Raylon, as well as Kat, but truth, truthfully, it's never easy, it, it's hard losing an election, which I did, but I'll tell you, after meeting with Laura and seeing you up there, my biggest congratulations goes to you, I'm extremely happy, extremely comfortable and I look forward to everything that you're going to do up there from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Sharon Chess, Earl Boulevard, and I forgot to announce, um, the Ferndale Community Concert Band is having our monthly UCR tournament at the Ferndale Outls Club on Friday, 7 o'clock, January 24th, please join us. It's $20 cash at the door and we usually play about six rounds, so please join us for our fundraiser, Outls Club Ferndale, January 24th, 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Heather. Hi, Heather Van Puker, the Ferndale Housing Commission. I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to update the community and council on a new program that we um, instituted this past holiday season for our residents at Wittington West. It was the first year that we held a Deck the Halls competition, kind of shamelessly piggybacking on all the beautification awards that the community does, but within our building. Um, it was a great opportunity for residents to get together and decorate um, their doors and also their floors. We had an award for the best overall decorations that went to Ruth Thompson, um, so she was, she had a beautiful um, point set of theme and it included music, so it was really um, an interactive experience. And then um, the floors really came together so beautifully that um, we had, we asked Michael Larry from city staff to judge the competition because I wouldn't dare put myself in that position to have to pick a favorite. Um, but he had a really hard time selecting a favorite floor because two of the floors really stood out, the third and the fourth floors. So those um, residents won a pizza party for their floors and Ruth Thompson won a beautiful trophy, beauties and I the beholder, um, and also um, won January rent free, so it, it was a pretty significant um, victory. So um, I heard feedback from several residents that they hadn't had a holiday season that was quite as merry and um, brought people together in, in this way, so I am going to call the first um, effort at Deck the Halls a success and we hope to repeat next year and we hope that um, our other property, Autumn House, will also get excited and want to replicate something like that, so just wanted to let the community know that we had a great holiday season at Wittington. Thank you.
Where are the pictures, Heather?
I know, I do, we'll, we'll put them out on our website, on our um, Facebook page and also in our newsletter, so.
Thank you very much, Heather. Anybody else for a call to audience? All right, um, seeing none, we are going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant to 2019 Tree Planting Reprogramming. That tricked me a little bit, I wanted to say 2020, but I, it's a revision of that program for 2020, so. Um, and presenting that, I think, is Adam Lewis. Thanks.
Good evening. Um, excuse me, um, yeah, we, uh, tonight we're re uh, requesting the approval of a reprogramming of the CDBG 2019 Tree Planting. Um, and it's really, it's in the language, but also the location of the trees. We're still working within the eligible, income-eligible block groups. So the first map is the Oakland County eligibility, unfortunately it doesn't, we, we do not have a digital version, doesn't copy quite well. You could see, these are income-eligible areas here, which would be the eastern side of Hilton, um, Eight Mile down through the Dales and then ending at Pine Crest. The original project area was to continue the pri, the 2018, Wanda, and then bring it along Eight Mile and then wrapping up uh, at Gardendale. Um, lessons learned in the 2018 was that there were, the opt-out that was, left us with a surplus of trees because people did have the option to opt-out or there are areas that were not eligible, um, while on the map they looked eligible, but the actual physical placement of the tree wasn't going to work out. So fulfilling the HUD missive of highest and best use of funds, um, and the help of Aaron Quatell, our Sustainability Planner, we expanded the project area to work on the east side of Hilton, um, the west side here is not uh, income-eligible, if, if, that's the reason why, and then move further into the Dales. Here is it with our GIS map, um, you could see a clear detail of the expansion while still including Eight Mile running through this area.
Are there any questions at this time for, for Adam about?
It's a public meeting.
Oh, sorry, you know, I've been away for six months, a little rusty, and, and now I'm going to open um, this up for the public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to ask questions or make a comment on, on the requested changes for this program, um, please, we'd love to hear from you. Oh, public hearing is now open. All right, um, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and open up questions or comments for um, the members of council.
I do have a question, um, so I understand that the west side of Hilton does not fall in the uh, CBDG grant area, uh, it's not eligible. However, I would like to know that the city is still going to invest in trees on that side, that we're not just going to plant trees on one side and say, oh, we're not going to do anything with the west side, other, it's going to be unbalanced, uh, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we're going to look at that as a whole street, that, I understand this map only, can only show the, the CBD funding portion of it.
Certainly, yes, and, and with the HUD funds, we are left strictly for this project type to income-eligible areas, but uh, Aaron Quatell and I have worked on, um, have discussed her plans with expanding the urban canopy and then that is part of our, our coming expansion.
Okay.
Anything I say that's uh, sounds intelligent, I've, I've stolen.
That's the only question I get.
Um, I'm just grateful that there's a lot of love coming to Eight Mile for those trees. Um, Garbage Park definitely, I hope some go in front of Garbage Park, um, as a way to help accentuate the park there. Um, so I look forward to the more trees going in.
Yes, we particularly chose that section um, to, I mean, there is the beautification aspect of it, but the controlling of sound in particular to, as, as well as screening, it is a high-mileage road right next to residential, so this is a, again, highest and best use of, of the, of the tree funds.
Excellent.
Thank you.
So we need a recommended action to move forward to reprogram this project area? Can we entertain a motion?
I move to approve the suggested action to reprogram the project area and description for the Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, 2019 Tree Planting to include all available areas within the eligible area-wide benefit block groups.
I'll second. Um, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McColsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Yes.
Thank you and have fun planting more trees. Uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda and I am going to read all of the items um, out loud. And first on the agenda, 9A is approval of November 12, 2019, and December 16, 2019, regular council meeting minutes as submitted by the city clerk. 9B, approval of payment to Miss Dig System, Inc. for the 2020 membership fee in the amount of $3,092.25 charged to the Water Sewer Fund, membership dues, account number 592000958 as submitted by DPW Director. 9C, approval of purchase order for Knapphide Truck Equipment in the amount of $10,000, the expense to be charged to the General Fund Motor Pool Repair and Maintenance and the appropriate account number as submitted by Deputy, uh, DPW Deputy Director. 9D, approval of emergency brake repairs on the front-end loader and backhoe by Southeastern Equipment Company for the estimated amount of $16,174.18 charged to the General Fund Motor Pool Repair and Maintenance and to the appropriate account number as listed as submitted by the DPW Deputy Director. And 9E, approval to purchase dispatch software and online emergency medical dispatch training from power phone for $4,081, paid from account number um, as listed as submitted by the cap, the police captain. 9F, approval of reappointments to the city boards and commissions as submitted by city clerk. 9G, approval for Mayor Piana to attend the US Conference of Mayors Winter Meeting from the city council training and education budget, and this is the amount of um, approximately $1,600, as submitted by the city manager. 9H, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review of the council finance committee. What is the pleasure of council?
I move that we.
Sorry, go ahead.
I move that we accept the consent agenda item as, consent agenda as presented.
Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, sure, please.
Um, so 9F, um, to the city clerk, um, I'm assuming that we receive some type of written confirmation from each of the board members uh, on these committees, that they are interested in being renewed?
Yes, at the end of the terms, we uh, first contact the city liaisons to uh, let them know who, a term is expiring and then we reach out to the expiring members and ask them if they're interested in um, signing up for another term. If they are, we add them to the list of reappointments.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the consent agenda? Uh, hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember McColsky?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Yes, and it's just a reminder to council, um, at the beginning of the agenda approval, at the beginning of the meeting, you can request to remove the consent agenda and um, for discussion, um, if you so choose. Uh, and next, onto the regular agenda, 10A, it's the consideration of the mayoral appointment of Dan Martin to the Ferndale Housing Commission for the term ending May 1st, 2020, per 19-29 of the city code. And um, I believe, who is, who would like to introduce that? Heather, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, thank you so much. Um, we are pleased to recommend the appointment of Dan Martin to the Ferndale Housing Commission to fill the remaining um, portion of the term that was vacated by Jeannie Davis. I believe in the communication that we did, uh, for the city, we um, noted our intention that we would seek reappointment then for a term um, through 2025, but for this evening, we're looking to fill the existing vacancy.
Excellent. Dan, would you like to say anything at this? Dan, would you like to say anything at this time? Sir, come on up.
First off, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the councils. My first opportunity to do so, and so very exciting to see you all up there. By way of background, you may recall, four and a half years ago, I took a position on the Ferndale Housing Commission during a, a time of particular difficulty and crisis for the commission. We worked a lot out. However, HUD had a disagreement in the relationship between the city and the commission, and made a recommendation, and actually threatened to hold up our funding if elected officials were not removed from the housing commission. So I duly resigned at that time. Now, no longer being an elected official, I have the opportunity, upon your approval, to resume that work. I have a great passion for, for the residents of, of the housing commission and that fall under their purview, and I think there just are a lot of opportunities there, and there's a lot of work I'd like to continue to move forward. So I appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for continuing your service in the community. Are there any questions or motion at this time?
I have a question. Sir, your application doesn't state how many years you've lived in the city of Ferndale.
Of course.
Well, Honorable Pollocka, uh, 15.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are any other questions about Dan Martin's qualifications, or lack thereof, you can hear them at this time. May we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the appointment of Dan Martin to the Ferndale Housing Commission.
For a term ending May?
Oh, for a term ending, uh, where is it?
May 1st.
Uh, May 1, 2020. Only five months?
He's filling an interim, interim seat.
Should we have a second?
That's my motion.
My second?
I second.
Second?
Can we have a roll, a vote, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember James?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember McCulkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana?
Uh, yes. Thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to working with you this year. Next on the agenda is 10B, consideration of appointments of council liaisons to city boards and commissions. So every two years, at the election of a new mayor, the council discusses and decides who on council will be sitting and representing the boards and commissions. We have, I believe, 28 different boards and commissions. Eight of them are the purview of the mayor, or just by action of the office of being mayor. And so what I'm going to do is just go down the list, and we'll have a discussion about each one, and then we'll vote at the end to wrap that all up. So I'm just gonna, you can self-nominate, or you can nominate one of your colleagues, and we will, we will discuss and go through this. Okay, so starting first with the mayor pro tem. Previous liaison was Pollocka, who served for two years under the changing of the guard of mayors for the last two years. And so we need someone else to serve in this seat for two years. And the expectations of this seat is to fill in when the mayor is unavailable, to provide speeches, and to attend meetings that the virtue of office are unable to attend.
Through the chair, I would like to nominate Raylon Leaks May.
It's a fine choice.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for this one? Okay, all right. We have Leaks May as our mayor pro tem. Next commission is Accessibility and Inclusion Commission. This was a newly created commission shortly at the end of 2019, and so we need one needed. I know this had some interest by a lot of council members, and so, who would like to self-nominate or nominate someone else?
I actually, once I found out that Dan Martin was the liaison for this position, and I heard what it entailed, I was very interested in it, as someone who definitely cares about accessibility and inclusion in this community. As a mother of, you know, a child with special needs, and an aunt of a nephew with special needs, and my work with the seniors, I definitely would love to be able to serve on this committee, so I'd definitely nominate myself.
Are there any other interests at this time? All right, Raylon, you're on the Accessibility and Inclusion Commission. Next is the exciting Agenda Committee. This is the committee that meets to, the Agenda Committee meets about the agenda, that sets the agenda. So it's a meeting about a meeting. And the virtue of office, the mayor sits on this committee, so we need one other representative from council.
I would like to nominate myself. It's actually a committee that I've never been on, and I've been interested in participating.
Excellent. Well, I've never been on it either, so welcome.
Oh.
If there's any other, any other interest, excellent.
I just wanted to say I've enjoyed being on that committee, and I think you'll find it very enjoyable, too.
Thanks.
And up firsthand, everything that's going to be on that committee before everyone else.
Oh, it could be, yeah.
Yes. And so the next one is Art in Public Spaces, which is one we don't hear about a lot. So the city manager, can you kind of explain that? Right now, it's the city manager plus one council member. Is this something that we, it doesn't seem familiar, and I think we left it blank the last two years, because the Arts and Beautification Commission was handling it?
Yeah, candidly, I could say the city manager's office has not had an appointment in my duration here to that commission. So to my knowledge, I'm not aware that it's met.
I know that we had an initiative to look at all of our boards and commissions, and I think we need to reconstitute that initiative to make sure that this is not a charter-driven one, and that it sounds like Art in Public Spaces is exactly what the Arts and Cultural Commission is already doing, so we don't need to duplicate work. So I'm gonna skip that one for now and move on to the Arts and Cultural Commission, and we need one council liaison on this commission. Who would like, who would like this distinction?
I would.
Excellent.
I'd move to nominate myself.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And, and the bo, uh, next is the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is highly technical and a lot of fun.
I was on it for six years. It is really great board, but I, I think someone new should be on it. I'm sure a lot of the members are tired of me. So I, I'm willing to, to support anyone else that would like to take it.
Actually, because that's actually a committee that I've never served on, and I would love to take it unless someone else would.
It's all yours.
All right.
Where are we? All right. Next up is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It has one liaison.
If no one else is interested, I would like to be on that board. It's another board that I've never served on.
It's an important board. It complements the work of the Planning Commission. And there is an Internal Financial Incentive Committee that also discusses policy unrelated to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, but they're sort of like the trifecta of policies that connect one another. All right. If there's no other interest, Pollocka, I think that one is yours. Next is the Capital Improvement Plan Policy Committee, or Policy Team. There are two council members who are allocated to this team, and it really is an internal team that does the CIP planning, that drives budgeting. It's really interesting to be a part of.
I'd like to nominate myself for that one.
I would like to remain on that board unless another member is really adamant about being on it.
Is this the one where two council members come down?
Yep, we have, we have Pollocka and Kat, or Councilwoman James.
Also known as Kat.
Also known as Kat. Where am I? Yep, sorry, I'm just marking everything, so I make sure I... Okay, next is the Construction Board of Appeals. This board doesn't meet very often, but when it does, we do need a liaison. City manager, do you know when the last time it's met?
I, candidly, again, I'm not, I don't recollect an instance of this committee meeting.
Me neither.
But I can say the city clerk during this fiscal year is gonna be producing an updated report on, a review of all the commissions per associated with the charter. And so we should be able to deliver that report as part of the city council budget process.
I'm actually not very sure as to what they do.
They haven't met in over the 10 years that I was serving as a councilwoman. So we will leave that blank for now until we get feedback from the city manager's office. The Downtown Development Authority is the virtue of office of the mayor, plus an alternative. And if, I would like to nominate Greg Pollocka to serve in this capacity, since he's been a significant leader and voice at the table, and they're going through transition with the new executive director, and I would love to have your backup on that.
I would be happy to serve with you.
And next is the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, which is the mayor virtue of office, and the employee pension board is next, which is the mayor plus one. And so we need one council member to join us on the employee pension board.
I am also interested in that position. It really requires someone that has familiarity with the, the budget, of which I have for the last six years. So I, I'd be very interested in being on that board. It's actually a board that I've never been on, and I'd like to be on, but councilman and mayor Martin kind of consumed that for six years.
Yes, you mean mayor, former mayor Coulter and Dan. I've never been on it either, so, and we see where this is going. Next is the Environmental Sustainability Commission, which is one person, and I'd like to nominate Laura McCulkey.
I was gonna nominate her. That's jointly nominated.
Oh, well, joint nomination for McCulkey.
Thank you.
Excellent. Next is the Ferndale Community Foundation, which requires two council members, but this is part of the old list as well. There is no liaison to the community foundation we got, that was rescinded many years ago in the bylaws of that foundation. Okay, so this one needs to be crossed off and is part of the cleanup. Number 15 is the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent Advisory Committee. I'm not sure this is still active either, and so we're-
It doesn't meet often.
It doesn't meet often, and the school district and the school superintendent just pick up the phone, and if there's an issue, schedule the meeting with the city manager's office. All right.
I was gonna say, well, if it is, then why not? I'm there anyway.
Okay, so we'll put you that down, and then if that changes as part of the review process, we know. But thank you for continuing your connections to the schools. Next is the Finance Committee.
I served on there for the last six years. It's an interesting committee. It's really two council members and the finance department. You receive an email that lists all the expenses and expenditures that are gonna be, need to be approved, and you just review them to make sure there's nothing outstanding or something glaring. It's not a difficult commission, but it's interesting. You, you've, you realize how many various expenses there really are.
Is that for two members?
It is two members.
It is two members.
I would like to save on that as well, as someone else.
I move to nominate myself.
Excellent. All right, next is the Highway Committee, and I believe this was one that's part of the review process as well.
Yeah.
And so we're going to jump over that and wait for the city manager and clerk's review. The next one, number 18, is the Liquor License Review Committee with one council liaison appointed.
I've served on it for the last two years. I wouldn't mind serving on it for another two years, unless there's a member that is really very, very excited about serving on it. The last two years, we've, we've, you know, reviewed two, two licenses.
I wouldn't say I'm very, very excited, but I think I have the skill set to do it. I mean, you've taken on a lot, and I don't want you to have too much on your plate.
Please.
I'm happy to take that on.
My calculations, after the beautifica, or the 28 that we have, you need to sign up for 5.6 boards to have an even split of council people evenly distributed through the 28. You're reaching your capacity, Councilwoman Pollocka. But we appreciate your willingness to dive in. I'm just, I'm teasing you. So we have Pollocka and, um-
Oh, no, if, if Councilman James would like to take an eye, I fully support that.
Oh, James, okay, sorry.
Yep.
Say thank you. We will put Councilwoman James.
Thank you.
Have fun.
And next is number 19, the Ordinance Committee. This committee reviews all the ordinances before they come to council, and there are two liaisons.
I'd like to nominate myself for that one as well. I would also like to nominate myself for that.
Excellent.
That's another one that I've served for about six years. It's, uh, it's a, a really good committee. You learn a lot about, you know, ordinances, and you have an opportunity to really dive into the charter and, and understand, well, try to understand what they were thinking of back in 1928.
I served on it for the last couple of years, so definitely have no problem passing on the torch to someone who'd like to learn more about it.
Excellent, thank you. All right, number 20, Parks and Recreation Commission, and we have one.
I would like to nominate Laura McCulkey, Councilwoman McCulkey.
Thank you.
I second it. Actually, I would nominate either you, McCulkey, or you, Bruno James, I think, you know. And, and my mindset behind this is that you guys have the younger children who are up and coming, so I think we'd like your perspective on the, on the, on that board now, just to kind of see how you can spruce up the perks for the younger generation. Mine are all older now. We've been there.
Yeah, I, I know that Councilwoman McCulkey is very passionate about the Kulik Center, and I think this is an opportunity for you to have great influence in, in the opportunities that are available through the Kulik Center and their parks.
I agree.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you for that. And next up, number 21, is the Planning Commission. I served on the Planning Commission for six years, and it is a lot of extra work, two extra meetings a month, and a lot of reading. Their packets are longer than councils.
I nominate Councilman Pollocka.
I am very interested in, in being on the Planning Commission. That's another one that I've never served on, that has piqued my interest, so if, if no one else objects, I would like to be appointed to that commission.
Thank you for, for that. If there's no other handraisers?
How many committees now?
Let me count.
Six.
He's on six.
On target.
All right. So number 22 is the Pleasant Ridge Fire Contract Committee. We provide service to our neighboring city, and this is the virtue of office, the mayor plus one. Who would like to be a plus one?
I'm happy to raise my hand for that.
Okay, excellent. Okay, and next is also virtue of office, is number 23, the Police and Fire Board. Oh, wait, no, that's just the mayor. There is no plus one on that. It's the, number 24, Police and Fire Pension Board, is the mayor plus one. And Greg, you've been on this before, do you have any insights on this?
No, I've never been on this.
Oh.
This is the pension board, which is usually, it meets at the same time as the employee pension board.
Oh, okay.
So they usually suggest, for whatever reason, they're two different boards, but they usually suggest that if- they usually suggest that if one person serves on the Employee Pension Board, it kind of makes sense that they serve on the other.
Well, that would be you.
Okay.
Because you are on the Employee Pension Board.
Yes.
Okay. Next is the number 25, which is the Sidewalk Hardship Committee. We currently have one resident who is on the committee. This meets really at the beginning of the springtime, in the fall. Meets in the fall. And it really is an important committee to hear from the residents.
I would not, oh, go ahead.
I'm happy to take that one on.
I just wanted to say that I did serve on that. We met one time.
You're the only meeting time. I've served on that too.
Yeah, one time. And that was that. So I was gonna say, I'm not married to this idea, so if Councilwoman Bruna James would like to...
Sure. Okay, and number 26 is the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. I've been the liaison for this multiple times. The expectation is to go to their quarterly meetings. You vote, you actually vote as a member of the city on policy, on driving regional policy.
Mayor Piana, I just want to let you know that we don't have the rest of the...
We also have Beautification Commission, so it's number 28.
We don't, we stuffed the Police and Fire Board in ours.
Yeah, somehow our packet didn't include all of the additional boards.
Really?
Yeah, you have the magic list.
You have the main one.
This is the one that was emailed out to the city council.
Yeah, I printed the one that Barbie emailed us.
So somehow the different ones got put into the packet?
One in the packet is not completely...
Well, I'll just keep it a surprise for you as I keep going down the list. So we have, what we have next, there's not many left. It's the Council of Governments, the Woodward Avenue Action Association, which is the virtue of office, and then...
Beautification.
Beautification Commission. So there's only three left.
Yeah.
Well, technically two for you. So the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, it's a great way to network and learn what other cities are doing.
I would like to volunteer myself for that one.
Excellent. Thank you. 27 is the Woodward Avenue Action Association, and then finally, 28 is the Beautification Commission.
I nominate Councilwoman McCulkey for the beautification.
I think that makes sense.
It makes perfect sense.
Agreed.
Okay, so that is the list of board commissions or committees for 2020. The ones that we skipped will be part of the review process, and so at this point, we need to have a motion to adopt and approve.
That was just what happened with the Woodward one?
The Woodward is a mayor virtue of office.
Okay.
So council is just more than going to council meetings, it's also going to six to seven other committees' meetings, and so I really appreciate your commitment to the community. And so can we have a motion to adopt this list if everybody's in agreement?
I move to approve the council liaison boards and commission appointments as determined by council this evening.
May we have a vote call, please? Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember McCulkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember James?
Yes.
And Mayor Piana? Yes, and that passes unanimously. And I just wanted to say congratulations to Raylan Leaks May for being the mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, that was the end of our official business for the regular agenda, and next is call to council, and we're gonna start with the department contractors and Chief Palazzolo. Come on up.
Hello again. I wanted to give a quick update on the accreditation status of the police department. A lot of you remember in 2018, there was a KRW report, and one of the many recommendations out of the 24, one of them was accreditation. Accreditation encompassed a large number of those. We decided to move forward for that, and July 1st, we officially started. The estimate was roughly 18 months-ish, so we've been at it for six months, and I'm happy to report that we're at 52% completed. We could be a lot further, but there's a lot of change, and you can only force-feed a lot of these changes in a subtle way. So instead of releasing all these policies and expecting our people to be able to actually follow all of them, so we'll release them a little bit slower, but I'm happy to report that we're well on track to be done within the 18 months, and I anticipate being in, being done within a year. Sergeant Brown has been shepherding that and doing a great job. Here to answer any questions you have on that.
Chief Palazzolo, I think you don't have questions on that, but I do have a question. This is the second swing I've seen tonight. What's going on?
Yeah, torn labrum, separated bicep tendon. I wish I could say that I was wrestling like a bad guy, but I was on a boat, and I had my arm jerked behind me, so I had the repair done. December 13th, they put two staples in there, and it's a slow recovery. That's about all I got for you on that.
Thank you very much. Very excited that the process is moving quicker than anticipated, so. Fire chief. Good evening.
Hi. Congratulations to all the new faces up there on council, and you as well, Councilwoman Pollocka, you know, up there. I look forward to working with all of you in the future.
The old face. Thanks for not calling me a blue face.
Fire Department also had a KRW report back in April. We have 20 recommendations. We've championed about seven of those so far. We will be promoting a fire marshal next week, hopefully, and that'll take some weight off my shoulders, and then I can start moving a little faster on that. I'm also working out a one-year annual report for you guys. I've given some of the work to six of my officers to kind of contribute to all that. So I invited you guys all out to a, kind of an in-service fire department today, and that'll be in March, so I hope to have that report for you guys then, and present that to you as well.
Thank you.
All right, and one thing, we've had some pretty good weather this, you know, January is like the worst month for me. But if we do end up getting some heavy snow, which I hope we don't, but if we do get heavy snow and any of the citizens or anyone in the city sees that a fire hydrant might be blocked, and you can't shovel it out, give us a call, and we'll come out and do that. All right?
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Parks and Rec.
Good evening, council. My name is Emmanuel, I'm from the Parks and Recreation Department. Just wanted to offer a few quick updates for the public. The first of which is our upcoming Daddy Daughter Dance, which will be taking place on Saturday, February 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Ferndale High School. Tickets are on sale right now. We have around, we opened it up for 250 people to join us. We've already had 50 people sign up for it, so those tickets are going fast. The ticket prices are $10 per person up until February 1st, at which time they will go up to $15 per person. So anybody that's interested in doing so and attending it with us should do so as soon as possible. The second thing is, we wanted to give an update to the public on our warming and cooling centers. We initiate these warming and cooling centers as a way to assist the public in dealing with dangerous weather. So when temperatures outside reach or maintain at negative nine wind chills, or reach above a certain point during the summer months, we open up and we welcome people in to either get warm or cool off, depending on what the circumstances is. That process is initiated in partnership with the city manager, and when we need to initiate those processes, we inform the public through all of our marketing channels. We make sure to get in contact with CARA about everything that we need to do, and we put it out on Facebook and everything. So we just want to make sure that the public is aware of that. When temperatures outside get reached a certain level where it's dangerous to be in your homes, if you lose power or don't have heat for some reason, the Kulik Center is open, and we will announce when it is open for those instances when we need to protect the public from that weather. Last thing, while I personally, I'm the summer camp director for our program as well, I appreciate the parents that have been on top of this year's summer camp program and asking when we're gonna open. I want to let them know that it is January. And while I am excited that the public is excited, it also reminds me all the stuff that I have to do leading up to that process. So I want to make an announcement right now, that summer camp registration will open on the first week of April. That'll be April 6th, that Monday is when it'll open up. There will be an early bird registration that will last until, I believe, sometime in mid-May, but I haven't, I'm still working on all of this, so just wanted to let the public know, anybody that's requesting, we'll open up on April 6th.
Just a few additional announcements. Good evening.
Good evening.
We have our soliciting bids for our park projects that are starting in the spring, which includes Shiffer Park, Wanda Park, and Geary Park. Bids will be opened on January 21st at the city clerk's office at 10:00 AM. We held our pre-bid meeting last Tuesday, and we had several contractors attend. It was a mandatory pre-bid meeting for both of the projects, again, one being Shiffer, and then the second project is combined of Wanda and Geary Park. We have posted addendums to, on BitNet, Mitten, for the bid process with everything that we went over in the bid meeting. So I just wanted to provide an update, and hopefully we get enough bids to make a, have competitive process and have a good selection. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, communications? Thanks, Kara.
Hey, I just wanted to say welcome and congratulations to everybody. I actually just realized that tomorrow is my five-year anniversary with the city.
What?
I know, isn't that crazy? It feels like it went so fast. But, so it's time to shake some things up, right? I feel like a new council, I can't wait to hear all of your ideas and work to make them realities. I just want to do a quick shout-out, I feel like I do this at least three times a year. First, a reminder that Monday, the 20th, next Monday, is Martin 13 Day, and as such, there's no parking enforcement, so parking is free throughout the downtown and municipal lots. And a really good way to know that is to go to parkferndale.com, and an even better way to know that is to subscribe to our text alerts, parkferndale.com. Just drop down the little resources tab and click Subscribe to the Alert System, and you'll get a text anytime there is free parking, anytime there's going to be parking impacted because of an event or another sort of thing going on downtown, and also if there's going to be a snow emergency and parking's affected that way. And as we are moving into January and February, that's certainly a possibility. So that's just my reminder. Thank you.
Finance, anything for you?
Good evening, I'm Cheryl, Finance Director. Welcome to the new council members, I look forward to working with you guys. Right now, we are heading full force into budget season, so I just kind of want to give you a couple of important dates that you're gonna want to put in your calendar as we move forward. So when, right now, we're kind of going through, making sure everybody's familiar with the process and putting their information in the system. We're gonna be meeting with the department heads for the month of February. March is when we're gonna do council workshops. I'm not sure if they're gonna look like they did before. We've done some Saturdays, we've done some opposite Mondays from council meetings. It's gonna really be whatever your pleasure is to get you the information that you're looking for. The important dates are April 13th is the first council meeting in April, and that's when we're gonna do our formal presentation, and then April 27th is when we'll do the budget adoption, and it has to be adopted by that date per the charter. That's all I have. Welcome aboard, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the Community and Economic Development? Justin?
Good evening, mayor and council. Justin Lyons, Planning Manager for the city. Just wanted to give a brief update on the Community Affordability and Inclusive Housing Action Plan that Adam Loomis is leading for the city. There will be one more community meeting in early February to sort of have an opportunity to come in person and give, answer essentially what the survey was, but give more feedback on some prompts and questions that will be coming from LSA, who's the city's consultant for the project. That date will be in early February. The plan is expected to be complete in March, so still opportunity to give feedback on that information. And for those that are interested, the project can be found on the city's website at ferndalemi.gov/projects, and you'll see a button there for the Community Affordability and Inclusive Housing Action Plan. So looking forward to having that wrap-up likely in March.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
City manager's office.
Yeah, a couple announcements. Mr. Dan Martin, we will continue with the tradition of notifying no parking at the loop pay stations with or without you up here. We will honor that intention.
Thank you.
He lives on.
Formally, I would like to announce that per the regulations regarding medical marijuana regulation and recreational marijuana regulation set by council in October 2019, staff will be coming back with initial impact report, basically from the police department and fire department and code enforcement on just any impacts, if any, of the current existing marijuana businesses that have been in operation. This is just for the process that council identified that we would adhere to within the first six months. So that will come back. I expect staff to present that report on January 27th, next council meeting. Also, I just would like to say welcome to all the council. I've met with some of you, and I will be meeting with some of you this week, and I am truly thrilled to continue to engage and building relationships and hearing about your objectives and just talking with each other about how we move this agenda forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I get all the departments? The DDA, Lena.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, and DPW, thank you.
Welcome to everyone. I love, I always, I forgot how much I love the swearing-in ceremonies. It's always the little government wonk in me just lights up. I just want to thank you all for your service, because I know it's not easy. We have a lot going on in the DDA office. Most of it is kind of boring, a lot of cleanup, a lot of getting things organized. I'm excited to be working on a budget process this year to try to get more in line and consistent with the city's timetable so that we aren't struggling to do things at the last minute and things like that. So, you know, I think this will be, we'll do baby steps, so this year, I think we'll make some improvements, and next year, when we have our strategic plan and our capital plan done, I think that's really gonna help us to, you know, assess ourselves and make a budget that's maybe a little more vision-based for the DDA. So looking forward to that. A little fun note, we've decided that we're going to keep the white lights on the trees as well as the rainbow lights on the dot fence up for a few more months, well, at least a couple more months. I think they add a really nice energy, so we'll take down, you know, the garlands and the ribbon and the stars and the snowflakes. But I think the lights, personally for me, when I'm driving home and it's dark, I like the way that looks, so we're gonna leave those up. So if you get any questions, I just wanted you to know about that. We're also going to be reevaluating and restructuring our committees, and we're very excited about that. So right now, we have four committees, which have waned in recent years. I think that's the best way to put it. So we are going to create one committee, we're gonna call it the Visioning Committee. We're gonna be re-engaging people in that. We have a lot of folks who have been interested in the DDA but haven't really known how to get involved. The committees were kind of confusing, they didn't know which was which. So our idea is that the Visioning Committee could split off and work on different projects, but it wouldn't have to be the same every year. So for example, this year, we really want to review our slate of events and potentially say thank you and goodbye to a few that have maybe, you know, maybe seen their best times, and then look at what we want to do for the future. But next year, we probably don't have to go through that process again, so I think having one committee like this will provide us some flexibility. So if you have any folks that have been, you know, expressing interest in the DDA or just folks who are interested in getting involved, please send them my way, and we're gonna hopefully be launching that sometime in February, so I'll keep you posted on that. And that's really all I have. Yeah, thank you.
May I just augment one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that the committee structure was really based off of the Main Street program, which really guided cities to have the four committees, but they changed that process about two years ago and said, go forth downtowns, create the committees that best suit your strategic direction.
Yes.
And they called them transformation strategies. And so we are transforming our committee structure to best match the direction of our downtown, and I look forward to the Visioning Committee that the DDA board has proposed. Committee that the DDA Board has proposed as a way to look forward about what are the real true needs going forward, and how does the community best support that. So I look forward to be a part of that as the new liaison from the council to the DDA. Thank you. And finally, oh, we have two more, sorry. Finance got before DPW. Sorry, Dan.
It's okay.
Yeah, I was talking about the other Dan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan J.C., Human Resource Director. And in our efforts to further the HR Department's Keep the Culture Alive Initiative, we're gonna be focusing on the Inspired core value for the next quarter. And we've defined Inspire as to inspire and to be inspired, coach one another because you have a genuine interest in helping each other succeed, take risks, make mistakes, and fail forward because you are safe to do so, take ownership of your work environment and be proud. And we're asking employees to nominate one another when they see people doing something that's inspiring in their everyday work life, or to also just tell us about someone that's on their workforce that inspires them. At the end of February, we're gonna take all of those names of the people that were nominated, we're gonna put them in a hat, we'll draw one, and the winner will get $250. So we're excited about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, DPW.
New council members, welcome to TV Night every Monday, person, or second and fourth Monday of the month. Welcome back to the familiar faces up there. Been pretty laid-back so far this winter. Down to DPW, they say it's supposed to snow this winter. We'll see on Saturday. It's looking like it's a pretty good chance. I don't know, they said that last weekend too, so starting not to trust these meteorologists, but that's another, that's a whole nother story right there. But overall, the water meter replacement's going pretty smooth. No really big hiccups or anything like that. We are keeping the ball rolling on that. We are almost finished with the section, so we're approaching the, I don't know, about 800 mark or so of meters replaced. So that's plugging and chugging along quite fine. And then other than that, just getting all our numbers around and stuff like that for Cheryl and for all folks to look at on how we need to spend some money in doing some water mains, doing some roads, buying some stuff, and, you know, keeping things going. So welcome. And Greg, nice to have you back.
Nice to be back.
And, you know, other than that, any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, so former Mayor Coulter used to go in alphabetical order, and since it's mayor's purview, it just so happens I'm gonna go in reverse alphabetical order, and Piana just happens to be first. What, did I miss someone? Oh, my gosh. Sorry, see, a little rusty after six months. Sorry.
And Legal Council.
What? Oh, my gosh, I missed you. Forgive me. I, thanks for the grace of this evening.
Thank you. Yes, so the March 10th Presidential Primary is coming soon. A lot of people have probably already received their application for, it's a dual application for both the March 10th Presidential Primary and the November General Election. People are also noticing that, this is a closed primary, which means that you must request a ballot either from the, a Democratic ballot, Republican ballot, or a no-party declaration ballot, which is proposals only. This is once every four years. This is a requirement. It's, this election is not a state, local, or federal election. It's actually held, the state allows us to host it on behalf of the political parties. So it is an election that will be reimbursed for the majority of the costs associated with it. The no-party declaration ballot has a proposal from the DIA for a millage renewal and a school bond and a school millage. So if you want to vote to some proposals, you may do that. Precincts 6 and 7, which are in the Hazel Park School District, will not have those Ferndale School Bond or Millage questions on their ballots. Again, no reason absentee voting has come to Michigan, so if you don't want to trudge out in the balmy March weather, you can certainly request an absentee ballot through the Ferndale City Clerk's Office. And I do have an announcement that Precinct 7, which has previously been housed at the Curling Club, has moved to share the Ferndale Free Methodist Gym with the Precinct 6. So the entire, basically Hazel Park School District voters who live in Ferndale, who are in Precincts 6 and 7, will now go to the Ferndale Free Methodist Church. We've, we're in the process of sending out ID cards, although it's not required by the state. It's always a good idea to let people know where they're supposed to be voting. So we are in the process of that. We are working with Communications Department to follow that up with a letter to just remind everyone, hey, you should have received your ID card. If you haven't, let us know. Again, those ID cards are for the voters' edification. You don't need to present them at the polling locations to vote. Just bring your photo ID if you have one. If you don't, easy-peasy, you just fill out an affidavit that you don't have one in your possession. But this change in Precinct 7's location is active for the March 10th Presidential Primary. So again, any questions, please feel free to contact me. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. And Legal?
Mayor, very briefly, there were a couple of issues and prospective ordinances that were raised in the fall. Were not quite considered by council, so I'll look forward to meeting with the Ordinance Committee in the upcoming weeks to hopefully have those matters refined and brought to council's attention. Nothing further.
Excellent. Thank you. And sorry I missed you. Okay, and then finally, getting back to the reverse order of the alphabetical list. And I might just do Ron Robin, because I always felt bad I was last. So I don't want anybody else to feel last all the time. So, but I'm gonna start, and I just wanted to say, it's really great to be back, that I've been diving in since the beginning of the year, January 1st, when I officially took my seat as mayor, but definitely been staying on top of the issues and having conversations. And I wanted to thank former Mayor Dan Martin for helping make the transition very smooth, and so I appreciate that, as well as the former Councilwoman Julia Music and Dennis Whitey. So thank you. You know, I'm just really looking forward to working in the city after the six-month sabbatical. It's been great to have a refresh and a step back and take a different perspective. And I look forward to working with everybody up here. We have a very talented council, and I'm just excited to be a part of it. So we will go forth and be productive together. And so next is just a couple of announcements. Martin Luther King Day is on Monday, January 20th, and typically, the city has partnered with Royal Oak Township, and I just wanted to invite everybody to their 1 o'clock event at the Royal Oak Township Recreation Center, which is at 21272 Mendota Avenue. And then usually, the school, the Ferndale School District participates as well. And since I've become mayor, there has been lots of movement around gender equity regarding the Michigan's Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. Last week, a coalition of business leaders and union leaders and LGBTQ advocacy organizations launched a campaign to gather petitions, petition signatures to add sexual orientation and gender identity and expression to the list of protected classes under the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. Jeremy Moss, our Senator, has been trying to get this passed legislatively, and now there's an effort, nonpartisan statewide effort, to put this on the ballot in order to get it changed permanently. And I have gone ahead and signed my name as mayor, which represents the city of Ferndale and all of you, to go ahead and support fairandequamichigan.com, which you can read about that effort here. At the same time, I was also contacted by the Freedom for All Americans to join the Mayors Against LGBTQ Discrimination, and this is sort of an ongoing support from the city of Ferndale. Mayor Coulter also signed on since January 2017. And over 350 mayors from all 50 states have joined this nonpartisan coalition to achieving inclusive nondiscrimination protections nationwide for LGBTQ citizens. And I know how important this is for everybody in our community and all the residents in Michigan that this passes. Nobody should live in fear that they may not be able to get a job or find housing as part of their life. And then finally, or two more things, the U.S. Conference of Mayors in DC. I am attending next week graciously. The President of the U.S. Conference of Mayors is the mayor of Rochester Hills, and they waived the fee for new timers, first timers, which is $2,000. So that fee was waived. And so I'm looking forward to connecting with some mayors around Michigan who go, but also will be tapping into some of the expertise there, particularly around going carbon neutral and net zero for communities and climate change. That's an area that I'll be spending my time. And then finally, I got my letter for the water meter placement yesterday, and I immediately signed up, or I'm sorry, on Friday, and I immediately signed up today. So my water meter, or the Piana Household Water Meter is getting replaced tomorrow. I encourage everybody to do the same. And next on the list, going backwards, is Polika. Councilman Polika.
Well, I have individually congratulated you all, but formally, congratulations on your elections and reelections. And I'm looking forward to the next two years serving with all of you in various capacities. I think it's gonna be an exciting year for the city and for all of us.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCloskey.
Yeah, I don't really have anything profound to say, but I wanted to thank everybody. I see a lot of familiar faces out there. I wanted to thank you for coming out and being involved and staying involved even after the election. So, thank you.
Excellent. And Councilwoman Lees May?
All right. Well, I just want to, of course, congratulate the new council and the Aiana, hope to see you in this role.
Thank you.
I just also want to thank the community for continuing to trust in my leadership. I'm very humbled by it, and I hope that we can continue to work together for new ideas and make 2020 an amazing year. Thanks to the department heads. I look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thank you to former council members. Where did Dan Martin go?
He didn't have the stage.
Former Councilwoman Whitey and Julia Music as well. And I'm just excited to have seen you up here, to already promoting new ideas. So keep it up. And you too, Mike Flores.
And Councilwoman James?
I just want to thank City Manager's Office and department leadership throughout the city who have really taken some extra time and care to get especially Laura and myself acclimated to the information that we need to be prepared to take this on. I also obviously appreciate the community support that I've received over the last several months. And I just have a couple of quick community announcements that I'd like to share. One is, it's been mentioned a couple of times today that in addition to the Presidential Primary on March 10th, there's also some proposals on the ballot. So regardless of whether or not you're even voting in the Presidential Primary, it is important to vote on March 10th. And with regard to the school bond issue, I encourage people to get information about it, learn about it. There are a couple of upcoming sessions, informational sessions hosted by the school. The next upcoming one is Tuesday, January 21st, at noon, which seems like an odd time of day, but Ferndale Elementary School, if you're available. Regardless of the in-person sessions, however, you can find information on ferndaleforward.com. And I know the city, not the city, the school superintendent's office is happy to talk to people and answer questions as well. You can contact them directly. A second item coming up next week, there's an informational session at the library on Wednesday, the 22nd, regarding ranked choice voting. That was something that I was involved in years ago. In Ferndale, we amended our city charter to actually allow for ranked choice voting. It's been on the rise in other states and recently used in the city of Eastpoint. There's also kind of a growing statewide group called Rank My Vote, MI as in Michigan. They are hosting the forum next week. I'm gonna be there and might give a two-second rundown on how things shook out in Ferndale back in 2004. But overall, it's just an informational session to learn more about ranked choice voting. If it's a brand-new concept to you, I encourage you to attend. Thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, everybody. Tonight was a great city council meeting and the first of the year, and I look forward to working with you. And with that, I call the meeting at 9:18. Thank you. Enjoy your evening.